I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's always good to see a crowd, especially on a night. And I want to say thank you for the mayor, Vice Mayor Carter, for setting the meeting last week aside while we were still dreaming. It meant a lot to us. I hated that the meeting got delayed, but I appreciate what everyone has done. And we appreciate all the prayers and thoughts that everyone has had for us. It's meant a lot to us as a family, and that's all I can say from the bottom of my heart. It's just, thank you. It is 7 o'clock, so we will get the meeting started. We'll call it to order. We'll pass for more. It's coming to do our devotion for us tonight. Amen.
It's an opportunity that I appreciate. I have a chance to share with you all tonight. I want to share just a few verses from Psalms 46, verses 1, 2, and 3. "God is our refuge and strength, a helper who is always found in times of trouble. Therefore we will not be afraid, though the earth trembles and the mountains topple into the depths of the seas, though its waters roar and foam and the mountains quake with its turmoil." I think there's sometimes an idea out there that religious people, particularly Christian people, that we think our life ought to be a little easier, or that it's going to be a little easier. And we get a little self-righteous about that sometimes because we feel like we have a little bit of something nobody else has. But the truth is, we all suffer hardships and difficulties. I love this scripture tonight because the writer, whose name it starts out by saying, "God is our refuge." And by the way, I looked this word, "refuge," up, and it has a powerful definition. It says, "A condition of being safe or sheltered from pursuit or danger or trouble." Wow, God is our refuge, and He's our strength. He's a helper who is always found. And here's the deal. I really believe He can always be found, and in good moments and bad moments, He is always there. Sometimes when bad things happen, people say, "Well, where is God?" And I say, "He's right there with me, standing beside me." And therefore, "We will not be afraid." And then these verses go on and paint a really sort of traumatic picture. It says, "Even if the mountains fall into the ocean." Have you ever felt like your mountains have fallen into the ocean? We all go through things like that, or that are really, really difficult. And I thought, oh, there probably wasn't a better example anybody could think of than to say, "The mountains fallen into the ocean." I know I've been crestfallen about stuff before. I know I've been disappointed. But boy, when your mountains fall into the ocean, that's really difficult. But here's the good news. God is with us, and He can be found in every situation. I have a friend who is a pastor up in Nebraska, and he was telling me that one Sunday not too long ago, the church had a picnic and a softball game after the morning worship services. And he said, "They're all having a good time out playing." And he said, "All of a sudden, someone pitched a softball, the batter fouled it off, and it hit his two-year-old daughter right in the mouth." And he said, "It busted her lip, and it knocked a tooth up into her gum." And he said, "We were just absolutely crazed with fear and concern." And he said, "We grabbed our daughter, and we got in the car, and we headed for the hospital." And he said, "About halfway there, she quit crying." And he said, "Now, my wife and I didn't quit crying until afterwards." And I understand when kids get hurt, you continue to cry. But he said, "About halfway through, his daughter quit crying, and she looked at him, and she said, 'Dad, why did God let that softball hit my face?'" And he said, "I said, 'The only thing that I knew to say is the first thing that came to my mind.'" And he said, "But I think it was the right thing." He said, "There's some rules in the world, and one of the rules is that a face and a softball cannot occupy the same space at the same time without there being a terrible collision." And he said, "She said, 'Oh, okay.'" It made all sense in the world to her. Sometimes, when we go through these difficult times, it doesn't make sense to us. Sometimes, when our mountains fall into our oceans, we don't understand. But the truth is, God loves us. We're His children, and He only wants what's best for us. Listen, this life is temporal. We're all going to die one day. We're all going to be gone. And it's going to be, hopefully, somebody will be sad when we're gone. Maybe happy when we're gone. But hopefully, it'll be somebody who'll be sad. But the reality is, God is going to be with us all through this life, even though we're feeble, and we're human beings, and life is hard. Thank you. Let me pray for you tonight. Thank you, Father, for the promise that You're our refuge and our strength, and You're going to be with us during difficult times, that we can find You. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brother John, before you leave, I want to say that you're retiring and getting ready to move to Texas in August. And I would personally thank you for what you've done for this town and this community. And this town and this community is going to permissively miss you and miss the things that you do here. It's going to be hard to replace that job.
I appreciate you saying that. I told somebody the other day, when I figured out they would pay me to stay home, I said, "I need to retire." But I have loved being in Westmoreland. I've learned, you know, you think when you get older, you don't have so much to learn. I've learned more in the five years I've been in Westmoreland than in any other five-year period in my life. And one of the things I really appreciate about this city is I think we're working together to make things better here. And I appreciate our council and our mayor, and our church has really has tried to be a part of the community, and I think after I'm gone, they're going to continue to do that. So thank you for the opportunity to serve alongside you. Give it a round of applause. Good night, y'all.
Mr. Moran, if you'd like to recall the old votes.
Well, Mr. Clayton had a form of listing. Ben?
President?
Smalling?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Here.
Let the record show that we have everyone present. We have a quorum. So we've now adopted the agenda. I make a motion to adopt the agenda. That's correct.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. That's correct. Anything to add or subtract from that? Discuss? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We have no one that signed up for any public comments, so we'll move into the minutes of the June 15, 2017 meeting.
Should I take corrections on about the sixth paragraph? Or Carter was mentioned last?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from June 15, 2017.
Second.
Now we can discuss it.
We have a motion and a second. The page ran to six.
It says, "Motion by Carter, second by Carter."
Yes. I'm sure I didn't want to.
The second one's supposed to be Carpenter.
And also, over, after the public hearing, where it's got "Motion by Carter, second by Lee to approve the second reading of ordinance 0420171 and ordinance to amend..." Ordinance, I'm not going to read all that. That was amending the budget for last fiscal year. That was done in May. It was reflected in the May minutes.
I'm confused. I'm wrong.
Ordinance number.
And also, you failed to state that the public hearing was closed. Just need to strike that one whole paragraph. It was in the May minutes. It reflects that. We passed that on a second reading.
Oh, you're saying that you have the first reading right here? Yeah.
No, 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 right there.
I left a paragraph missing. That should be.
That was in the May minutes. Right under where it says, "Caitlin's whiskey and pollution health," the next paragraph, that was in May minutes. That's where we amended the budget for last fiscal year.
Okay. No, I was just confused because that's not in this first budget. No, I know, but I thought it was the second reading.
Yeah, she corrected that off, so she didn't send us...
Yeah, I must not have received the updated one. Oh, Kelly, I was just talking about the first reading, and it was the second reading in the voting, the motion passing. The layout's a little different, so I'm sorry.
I'll make all those corrections.
And then, yeah, it's the second reading for the rate of taxation.
Let me make those corrections. Can you send us corrected copies?
Also, close the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Yeah, close the public hearing.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the minutes with the changes that were mentioned, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the financial statement.
I gave everyone a corrected one. There were some accruals from the end of the year that I had not pulled out, and I've got the corrections on it.
I move to accept the financial, the corrected financial statement that we received tonight.
We have a motion and a second to accept the corrected financial statement that we received tonight. Any other comments?
Well, this is our, it's our year-end, our fiscal year-end, and there's a few departments in our general fund that was way over budgeted, over budget. So just wanted to make note of that, because this is the report that will go into the comptroller's office. Our police department was $60,000 over budget.
What a, what changes there may be coming on the updated version, Kelly, if you don't mind.
Me, Cumberland, $3,000 donation. Fireworks, I had made an error and pulled their $4,500 out of the past fiscal year, and it comes out this new one.
Yeah, from.
And the ECC corrections, I had to do that.
Yes.
Fire Engine Fund, to make sure it actually went where we write a check at the end of the year, for it to go into a separate fund for them. Did that, and... Oh, and industrial repayment that got paid after the first of the, after the first two R. And litigation tax, it's not due till the 15th of the month, but we needed to have it reflected. I believe that was all of it. What about the RTA dues?
The RTA dues were actually paid on dues. That section of RTA is the regional pension of the line items and maybe a...
Thanks, Kelly.
We actually will take some good financial time or something.
In defense of the police department, it looks like most of the line items that, other than the general salary, were the items that were out of their control or budgeted, you know, very quickly, other than the salary.
And since then, Chief and I have talked about some things that could possibly help with that, so.
But we didn't end up adhering with the possible amount.
We did.
But the news came in very, very good. Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes. The record reflect that the motion carries unanimously. Under new business, the next item is Resolution R. 062017-2, which is Resolution to adopt the internal control policy for the city of Westmoreland, Tennessee. I think we've got all the corrections discussed that were needed for that, for the internal work study. So we'll entertain a motion. We want to discuss that some more. I move with Dr.
My second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the internal control policy. Good discussion. There you go. I'll call for a vote.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Next item, the motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is appoint Tim Farley as the safety director for our city. Tim has graciously offered to accept this with no more at this time, compensation for him. He's been doing this for, actually, the past couple of years now. He's stepped up during our inspections, and he's done a good job, so I'm proud to make some recommendations for him to do this for our city. And the next item will tie directly into that also. So we'll take this item first.
I make a motion to appoint Tim Farley as safety director for Westmoreland.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Tim Farley as the safety director. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, can you discuss the requirements for the safety director's position? I know we don't have a job description written for that, but it's been a desire of you to create that position for a long time, so I would kind of like to talk to you about specifically what the job duties would be.
Okay, that's a very good point, because at this time, we have actually just been waiting it as such to say. The safety director has taken the approach. Mr. Farley especially has taken it on himself to start inspecting the firework equipment, things like that. There is a lot of mandatory training that OSHA requires, so we do set up a job description for this, and I'm sure that OSHA has some, some things, but what they were requiring now for the policy was that we named some. In the past, there's been various people who has accepted this position. Carter has been in that position, and I don't know if you've actually read the same job description or anything, so we're making a step in some new territory. That's a very good question.
The reason I'm asking is because he'll work with all the other departments, and he'll be in charge of the safety and pretending to all the cities.
It'll be basically like it has been for the last three years, be making sure that we're in compliance with all the OSHA requirements and inspections like the last time, all your bloodborne patterns, plant injury, MSDS, all that.
The ordinance has a rough description of his duties under administration.
Yeah, and that's what I was, I was going to comment on, is, you know, let's get the ordinance in place of what we're adopting in terms of the safety and health program plan before we talk, you know, specifically about, because obviously, the job description needs to match whatever we end up passing in terms of the program plan, so.
Do you have any questions in the council?
No, I do all OSHA, I keep OSHA certification up, and also, I have to do public works. You don't want to have that, but I need to.
Them to ask, but I'm sure you have a good one to start with.
Yeah, they do, and OSHA does too, on our website.
Have another hat, Tim.
Any further discussion? Call for a vote, please.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the ordinance itself, 072016-1. It is that the ordinance to establish an updated occupational safety and health program plan, devise rules and regulations, and to provide for a safety director at the implementation of such program plan. So this is actually an update to an ordinance that's already in effect. Is that correct?
I think the other one was one page long, but this one is about 20.
On the agenda, you've got ordinance number 072016, and the ordinance number on the actual ordinance is 072017. It's supposed to be seven.
It is, so that's the reason I was asking, we're going to stop dating the others, so this is...
No, but there is an older one on file, but OSHA changed their requirements for it.
Any further questions on this discussion? Who voted on that? Oh, okay. This one needs to give a motion.
I'll give you a motion.
Okay.
I'll second the motion on ordinance 072017-1.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call for a vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Resolution R. 072017-1, Resolution authorizing the city of Westmoreland, Tennessee to participate in the total safety partners matching grant program.
I move to adopt Resolution R. 072017-1 to apply for the TML safety grant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Resolution R. 072017-1. Well, what section of the budget would that come out of this grant?
Actually, Mark has come to me about some lights that he might, that would benefit the police department and public work, so, but it would actually come from the fire department equipment. He's found some lights that they do for two of the totals, right at $3,000, which is what this magic grant would be.
Okay, well, we'll call for a vote. There's no other discussion?
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item is the sign for City Hall. It showed ring rings up there, and the prices on it. I want to have a motion.
I know we replaced the sign over there with Waller signs out of the field.
Waller?
Waller, Ron Waller.
What's the cost then?
$840.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have a motion and a second to replace the sign at City Hall for Ron Waller's signs, both panels, for $840? Any other discussion?
I have a couple of questions if y'all care with me. First off, what line item would this come out of? Public buildings. All right. And was there an actual quote on, like, a documented quote on this paper for this?
I think I provided it to you.
I think it was in the packet from, was it the work study? I have the work study packet, so I mean, I'll look that through, but I didn't see what it said.
That was my concern. Our initial estimate verbally was a $2,200, and that's when we sought, seeked out the actual design, the price of the sign, and now we're looking at $840 bucks.
So, a few other things that I just, I wanted to say. This doesn't look like what we originally discussed. What we had discussed was to have simply the Westmoreland City Hall. I mean, pretty much the only thing that would change is town would be replaced by a city, and this looks a lot different than that. And I'm just curious as to when this became the, the new sign, because the original discussion we had was not this. This is what we had. We didn't have a quote in there.
See, if you're out, you lead looking back this way, that's the terminal, kind of the, the line you see looking back forward, so it's... It's a new look?
Yes.
I mean, I'm aware of that. I'm just saying, it's not what we originally discussed. And me personally, the way I feel about it, sure, it's $840, which seems like a drop in the bucket compared to what we see here on the budget. But when you look at it from what it went from originally to this, that's a pretty big jump percentage-wise, and I just don't understand why the price changed so much that quickly, and we don't have, or jumped that much percentage. We don't have an actual written quote in front of us. And like I said, I know this seems like a minimal amount, but as we discussed with this year's budget, we came in on the negative on a number of items. And, you know, we might as well start the year off right, and if it's not necessary, you know, I just, I don't see any point in that, in spending that much money on signs. And the thing, and like I said, again, it's a minimal amount, but we need to follow, like, due process with getting quotes for anything. We need to have documented quotes down for future reference, because, you know, we may be here, we may not. So down the road, if somebody's wondering how much we paid for, why we, who we went with, and things like that, if it's not in the file, then they're not going to know, and that's a problem we've run into right now anyway. And, and again, I would also like, just to be honest, I would like more than one book just for, it's common sense, on anything you do, you want to get more than one book, even if it's considered a minimal amount. So, that's what I have to say about it.
Any other discussion? We looked at the Marine Ring and the work study, is, I mean, obviously, we don't much think about it. Does anyone else have a comment on the, on that versus just the fine sign? Long call for a vote?
Smalling?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
No.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Motion carries three, two.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the beer permit application for friends. We looked at the, the work study, so I'll entertain the motion.
I move to accept the beer applications for friends.
We have a motion and a proper second to accept the beer permit application for friends. Any other discussion?
Tim, just for, just for my confirmation, say, everything's in order?
Yes, been a background check, and I told them, everything was reviewed, and it's perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the beer permit application for Westmoreland liquors. We just got a special one also for work study, so I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to grant the beer permit to Westmoreland liquors.
Second. We have a motion in a proper second to grant the beer permit application for Westmoreland liquors. Just got a question. Yes, anything to say, everything passed?
Yes, except what they've been, uh, of the new ordinance, uh, the state will regulate how much you can have in there, how much you paying as far as beer, and the state comes up, so, uh, somebody comes out and looks at this, the state regulates how much you can have in there.
Do you recall when that went into effect, that a liquor store could allow beer?
I think it's.
Isn't it recent?
Yeah, it's not that recent, it's probably.
Been a couple of years, I think, haven't it?
Yeah, it's at least two thousand fourteen or thirteen, no? They're also allowed to sell small food items as well, they don't all have that.
It was part of the compromise when grocery stores were allowed to sell.
Oh, okay. So, the state would be responsible for the background, which they've already went through that.
Their, their response was beer board, but they'll regulate how much they can sell.
Okay. And, and this is minor, because, I mean, the, the, the schools are really all together, but, um, what's the name and address of the school nearest to your business, that's incorrect, I mean, it would be probably Westmoreland High School, and it would be Hawkins instead of Fleetwood, but, again, they're close enough to each other, it's not, I know it's, it's a small thing, but I just want to recognize it, so.
We need to, we need to make a note of it, and then, then, in the motion, correct that.
Okay. Well, um, there was a, something incorrect, and then I failed to see that, too, I mean, making in my motion on friends, they also stated that First Baptist was the closest church, and I think it would be Crossroads instead of First Baptist, wouldn't you think, Chief?
Yes, I do. I think all the name changes so quickly that we were used to before, I think that's what that comes up in the plan.
Not with First Baptist, because it's out on fifty-two.
Yeah, that's on fifty-two.
Is everybody okay with me putting that in?
I had a sticker there, and I, stick mine. I'll share, I'll add one, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the other one, so, between us, we got them both.
We'll give the other a chance to get all that counted up. More to call for a vote.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Vennel?
Yes.
Smalling?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the beer permit application for Westmoreland liquors. We just got a special one also for work study, so I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to grant the beer permit to Westmoreland liquors.
Second. We have a motion in a proper second to grant the beer permit application for Westmoreland liquors. Just got a question. Yes, anything to say, everything passed?
Yes, except what they've been, uh, of the new ordinance, uh, the state will regulate how much you can have in there, how much you paying as far as beer, and the state comes up, so, uh, somebody comes out and looks at this, the state regulates how much you can have in there.
Do you recall when that went into effect, that a liquor store could allow beer?
I think it's.
Isn't it recent?
Yeah, it's not that recent, it's probably.
It's been a couple of years, I think, hasn't it?
Yeah, it's at least two thousand fourteen or thirteen, no? They're also allowed to sell small food items as well, they don't all have that.
It was part of the compromise when grocery stores were allowed to sell.
Oh, okay. So, the state would be responsible for the background, which they've already went through that.
Their, their response was beer board, but they'll regulate how much they can sell.
Okay. And, and this is minor, because, I mean, the, the, the schools are really all together, but, um, what's the name and address of the school nearest to your business, that's incorrect, I mean, it would be probably Westmoreland High School, and it would be Hawkins instead of Fleetwood, but, again, they're close enough to each other, it's not, I know it's, it's a small thing, but I just want to recognize it, so.
We need to, we need to make a note of it, and then, then, in the motion, correct that.
Okay. Well, um, there was a, something incorrect, and then I failed to see that, too, I mean, making in my motion on friends, they also stated that First Baptist was the closest church, and I think it would be Crossroads instead of First Baptist, wouldn't you think, Chief?
Yes, I do. I think all the name changes so quickly that we were used to before, I think that's what that comes up in the plan.
Not with First Baptist, because it's out on fifty-two.
Yeah, that's on fifty-two.
Is everybody okay with me putting that in?
I had a sticker there, and I, stick mine. I'll share, I'll add one, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the other one, so, between us, we got them both.
We'll give the other a chance to get all that counted up. More to call for a vote.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Lee?